For the pleasure of allegiance and a moment of silence. It's a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Before we begin tonight, we want to note the mayor's absence. And we do wish him well, good recovery. But he did send in a message, and I'm gonna read. So please bear with me for a moment. A message from Mayor Alvarez. To the town council, town staff, and our community. I wish I could be there with you tonight. As we swear in our three new council members. And close out the calendar year. Even though I can't be here in person. I didn't want to let this meeting pass without giving a special thank you. To Mr. David Cohn, Mr. Mike Head, and Mr. Jerry Moss. For your service to Indian Trail during your time on the town council. It has been an honor to work with each of you. And I am proud of the things we've accomplished together over the years. I wish all of you the best. I would also like to officially welcome Mr. Tom Amburgi, Mrs. Crystal Buchalik. Sorry, Crystal, if I got that wrong, but I'm gonna try. And Mr. Dennis Gay to the Indian Trail Town Council. Thank you for running and choosing to serve your community as a council member. You are joining two seasoned council members. And together, I know you will all do what is best for our town. Good luck as you take on this new role. Thank you to everyone who has been praying for me. It means more to me than you know. I look forward to being back with you all, God bless. This is a statement from the mayor. Thank you. So, I guess, the next item would be, we're gonna have the newly elected official ceremony. And we have some recognition and comments from the outgoing council members as well. So, I'd like to start with, well, before they speak, let me just say a few words, actually. Mr. Head, Mr. Moss, Mr. Cohn. I've worked with you guys for about, almost four years now. Remember when we ran together, first election? I didn't get in, but I got in subsequently when you guys appointed me, I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys, honestly. When you joined the council, I want to say that we increased the professionalism that has been displayed here for the last four years. Hopefully, we can carry that forward. We had a town manager in the past who said that Indian Trail went from being a teenager to being a young adult now. Where we've grown up, we've taken on new responsibilities. And the town continues to grow and prosper. So for each of you, I want to say thank you to you. I also want to say thank you to your families as well. Because when you serve, they also serve as well. Even if they're not sitting up here, but the things that they do at home and in the background, just to get you ready to be up here. I want to say thank you to each of your families. And thank you for your service. You will be missed, but hopefully, don't be strangers to town hall. And we may call upon you, if the need arise, for your counsel and your advice. So, Mr. Barber.
Also, been a pleasure serving with you. With hearts full of love and gratitude, our community now takes leave of the three of you. Your public service to our community and your confidence of making Indian Trail a top place to live in the United States. Is an excellent testimony to your time on council. I wish that your latter days will be as prosperous and happy as your former days. It's been a pleasure that you've brought professionalism. And the mutual respect has been appreciated. Enjoy serving with all three of you. I wish you Godspeed, and thank you for your public service. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll open it up to Mr. Moss. Sir, if you would like to say a few words.
Yeah, I didn't prepare anything for tonight. I'd like to quietly go back into civilianhood. But I think it's really important that we all, as a community, take the time to serve the others in our community. Whether it's through government, or whether it's through a charitable organization. But to open our hearts to each other. I've enjoyed my four years here, it's been very rewarding. I've learned quite a few things while I've been here. And the one thing that I learned the most is, I thought I knew a lot when I got here. And I didn't know nearly as much as I needed to know. I don't have any sage advice for the new council members, other than to perhaps be true to yourself. And once you, you know, you look within your heart and you answer to yourself. Just stay true to yourself. Don't try to be anything to anybody else that wants you to be, whatever it is. We have a fine town staff, we have the best town manager. I've never been one to sit up here and just heap praises on people. Because it was kinda like when I was growing up, learning the word "love." Sometimes it's overused so much that it loses its meaning. But I think the most of the staff here, you guys are absolutely awesome. And all the things that you do, and the way that you deal with the public. The way that you dealt with myself. We're a very blessed community to have such great leadership. You know, and this is a great day for me. Because I'm just passing the torch to the next person who's gonna step up for the community and do what's right for Indian Trail. I truly love this community and love you people. Please show the next council the respect that you've shown me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Cohn?
Yes. A lot of what the mayor said. Got great town staff and a great community. And I've been up here for now almost 10 years. And it's time to step down. But I have enjoyed everything that we've accomplished. And I just want to say, I'm very honored to be here. Very honored to have served such a good community. I thank the council that we work with now. Appreciate you guys, appreciate your hard work. And I feel real confident with the two guys that were leaving up here. With Marcus and Todd. That you're great leavers. Two of the best council people that I've ever worked with. And I'm just happy to say that I know you and I can call you both friends. And I just have a little bit of advice for the oncoming council. Just remember who you are. Remember why you're here. Remember who you represent. Because you represent the town and the people of Indian Trail. You work with and for the people. You're a servant when you work up here. So be the servant to the people. Lastly, but not least, for 10 years, I've said this. And it's kinda something that I've lived by all my life. And it's something my daddy taught me a long time ago. It's easy to do the right thing. So just try to do the right thing. And it'll be, it's an easy job, or it's an easier job. I thank you everybody, and I appreciate you. And I look forward, I'll be back, I'll come watch. So, head back, look at you.
And Mr. Mike, thank you, David. Mr. Mike Head.
There's not a whole lot I can add to what the other two have said. But.
I'll try.
It has been my honor to serve on this council. And to serve these members up here and the mayor. And actually, Jerry, Marcus, and I ran all at the same time. Welcome to the new council members. I have met with Tom. Dennis and I worked on the planning board. Mr. Cohn over here asked me about six years ago to be on the planning board. Sure, what's planning board? So, I accepted it. Dennis was on it, I believe, at the same time. And, you know, I thought we worked well together. You know, we absolutely worked well together. And, you know, it was very enjoyable. And then, two years later, I ran and made it. And then I said, where am I supposed to go? You know, there's really no book that does, you know. I'm one of these guys that likes to, okay, this, 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 you know. It's not that way. And everybody else has said it. Be yourself. All you have to do, both your conscience, all you have to do. I was fortunate enough to meet, to work with some very strong companies. And I ended up with very strong staff. But I can tell you that the staff here is second to none. We rely on them very heavily, and they've come through. Also, would like to say to Mike the Barn, it's been a pleasure working with you and your staff. And our backstop sits right here. She's always telling us, she's always keeping us above board. And she may not say a lot, but what she says makes a whole lot of sense. And I appreciate all that you've done for us. Again, welcome, and looking forward to the future of Indian Trail with the new council.
Alright, with that being said, we do have a plaque that we'd like to give each of you. With us that, call your name, you come up, you receive it. And then we get a photo of you. When you get it, the clerk has asked you to come back to your seat. Because there's a ceremonial exit or walking off the dais. So let's make sure we do what the clerk says.
Mr. Jerry Moss?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Tom, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mike Head? On behalf of the town, thank you very much for your service. We do appreciate it. Thank you. Everybody says, as good time as a child, right? So this is David's second time, I expected him to come back again for another plaque. But David, again, thank you for your service to the town. You've been invaluable, your advice, your contribution to the town. I remember first, when you were running, came over to my house. And I wasn't trusting you then, but I like what you're doing. You're doing alright.
So, as we said, we do thank each of these council members for their time, their dedication, and their service to our town in various capacities. I'm gonna ask each of you to rise, give them a round of applause as they join us in the gallery, as we welcome in the new council members. Thank you very much. You guys are still welcome to stay, because there is a reception afterward. We would ask that if you would remain. So therefore, some people can say some nice words to you in private downstairs. You may be seated. Alright, next order of business is the oaths of office and the seating of the new elected council members. The town cook is actually gonna administer the oath. If you've brought your wife, your son, your daughter, or special someone that you'd like to hold up the Bible, well, you take the oath of office. I'd ask that person to come up with you as well. And Mr. Amburgi, you are up, sir. Thank you very much. Do we need to give him the mic as well? So that we can hear him?
Right hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Tom Amburgi.
I, Tom Amburgi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of council member of the town of Indian Trail.
Of council member of the town of Indian Trail.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
And if you will stay right there. Come with me. And we are gonna seat you down here. If you'll take this seat, and let me give you... If you'll put that on your lapel. And we will slide this in here. Now it's official.
Next is Mrs. Crystal Buchalik.
Do you have someone? So you are in the middle, right here. Face the camera, straight, face Abby. Kinda tilt so we can see. Alright, now. If you will repeat after me with your right hand on the Bible. I, Crystal Buchalik.
I, Crystal Buchalik.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office of council member of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina.
Of my office of council member of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Come with me. It's here. And then we're gonna ask you to put this on your lapel, it's a magnet. It is tricky. Okay, and if you'll go around, I'll lead you to your chair. And you are, you're gonna sit here? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Dennis Gay?
Mr. Gay. Do you have someone to hold the Bible for you?
Somebody, yeah, somebody.
Oh, you have a volunteer. You have the lovely Lisa holding your Bible. Alright, so if you'll put your right hand on the Bible. Okay, so I, Dennis Gay.
I, Dennis Gay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
Of the council member of the town of Indian Trail.
Council member of the town of Indian Trail.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Wonderful, thank you. And then we'll sign again. Okay, and let's get your tag. And if you'll, well, it's just a magnet. And then meet me on the other end. There you go.
Alright, well, thank you. The new council is seated, so welcome to each of you. As you come in, there is business that you have to take care of. And the first of them will be a motion for the mayor pro tem. Can I get a motion from the council for mayor pro tem?
I have a motion.
Please go ahead, sir.
I nominate Todd Barber.
Mr. Amburgi has made a motion for Mr. Todd Barber, all in favor? Alright, the motion is unanimous. Mr. Todd Barber, welcome, sir. Ms. Queen is gonna give you the oath of office.
That I am, thank you. I, Todd Barber.
I, Todd Barber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office of mayor pro tem, so help me God.
Of my office of mayor pro tem, so help me God.
Awesome, thank you. Marcus? Can you be the sign?
Oh, oh.
We'll let Marcus sign, and then we'll put Todd Barber here. Okay, so, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. And we will order a new tag that says "mayor pro tem" underneath your tag. Thank you.
We'll angle it this way then, come this way, come down this way. If anybody come down here, then I'll place you. There you go, you get there, you come on your feet. You're gonna see the flag, shoulder in, just a tad, so it can look other way. And then, Crystal, you too, and then, tight, tighten. Crystal, step down a step, this way. There we go, perfect, you, maybe turn a little bit, yeah. There you go, that's perfect. Good? Crystal, hold on, you're straight, yeah, you're good.
Ready? Let's go. Alright, thank you guys. Thank you guys.
Mr. Barber, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you to my colleagues. Next thing we have on here is the CRTPO. The, I talked to the mayor and his mayor pro tem. He's authorized me. The mayor chooses a primary delegate. He does not want to be it, because he doesn't have the time, doesn't fit his schedule. So he's asked that Mr. Councilman Dennis Gay be the primary delegate. Mr. Gay, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We've discussed it with the mayor, and also, we need a second alternate. And the mayor Alvarez and I would like to choose and nominate Mr. Tom, Councilman Tom Amburgi as the nomination. Do you accept the nomination as the alternate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let the record show, is Councilman Dennis Gay as the primary and Councilman Tom Amburgi as the second alternate. Next item is, we have a central regional council appointment, also known as the COG. I need a nomination from the council for a delegate. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that Crystal Buchalik.
We have a motion that Councilwoman Crystal Buchalik be the delegate. All those in favor, raise your hand. There you go, let the motion show that it's unanimous. We need a, we have to choose an alternate. We need a council nomination for an alternate.
I'd like to make a motion, Tom Amburgi, for that position.
We have a motion that Councilman Tom Amburgi be the alternate. All those in favor, raise your hand. Let the motion show that Mr. Amburgi is unanimous as the second alternate. Next, we have agenda additions and deletions. Next is, I have a motion to remove item 8F from the consent agenda. Approval budget amendment for shady bluff improvement. I'll make that motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Show that item 8F under consent agenda has been removed. Does anybody else have any additions or deletions to make?
Yes, sir.
No, okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Mike McIntosh made the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Next, I'd like to open the floor for public comments. Do we have anybody signed on? Okay. Next is the town's rule for addressing the Indian Trail Town Council during council meetings. These rules were established by the Indian Trail Town Board and apply to public comments participants. As a reminder, they are read at each meeting before public comments are received. The board thanks you for sharing your thoughts and concerns. Please state your name, and if you're a resident of Indian Trail, clearly for the record. Please elect a representative for multiple individuals having similar messages. Each speaker or representative will have three minutes to state their concerns. Comments should be directed to the entire board and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Please refrain from communicating grievances regarding town staff in this forum. We ask that you redirect those to the town manager. All documents submitted to the board become town property and may be available as requested. Anonymous general written public comments will not be read. Regarding comments for public hearings, anonymous writings will not be read. All other written public comments, we read for a restricted period of 20 minutes. After 20 minutes remaining, written comments will be noted as either opposing nor supporting. Any speaker may be asked to discontinue or be disallowed to speak by the board if rules are violated. And last, comments may be recorded and broadcast on the internet. I'll now open the floor for public comments, and we have Ms. Beverly Jones.
Beverly Jones, 5102 O'Sharratt Highway. We are coming to the close of 2021. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the outgoing town council, and the planning director for everything that you have done this year. I would like to, you are to be commended on a job well done. I would like to say congratulations to our three newest people that have been elected for the new council for this coming year. I wish you much success in all your endeavors and in making Indian Trail a wonderful place to live. I would like to wish each one of you a Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I have an email that was sent in for a public comment from a Michael Falkenberry. I have a email that was sent in for a public comment from a Michael Falkenberry. Says, "My comments are as follows. First, I wish the very best to the outgoing council members and thank you for your service. Though I didn't always agree with some of the decisions you made, the best of luck to the incoming council members, and may they represent all the people of Indian Trail without bias and with respect. Since there are two positions of importance that will be nominated and voted on here are my suggestions as to whom should be considered. Mayor Pro Tem, Marcus McIntyre, and allowing him to continue with the job he has done the past two years." CRTPO delegate primary. Dennis Gay, since Mayor Alvarez is continuing to having health issues, though he used having bad night vision for not attending CRTPO meetings back in 2013, Mayor Alvarez had asked me to drive him to the CRPTO meetings, which was the reason he gave me for his absences. Dennis Gay will stand up to the NCDOT, just as I witnessed him in purses due against a land developer during a meeting regarding the Publix retail complex. The only mockery in the past with council members not attending CRTPO was by one council member elected in 2015, and she only attended two CPRTO meetings in six months, which was addressed during council meeting public comments by Amanda Falkenberry. The second meeting she attended was to inform CRTPO she could no longer attend the meetings, though she had sent an email previously stating her resignation. She never notified the alternate when she knew she could not attend the upcoming meetings. Jerry Morris and Gary Savoy both had perfect or near-perfect attendance as the primary CRTPO delegate during their terms. CRTPO delegate alternate, either Marcus McIntyre or Tom Amburgi would do a great job in representing Indian Trail and attending the CRTPO meetings consistently when needed. Mr. McIntyre has proven this by him filling in for Mayor Alvarez the past year. May all of you have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and may all of you have good health and God bless. Thank you. Do we have any more? I'll now close all, uh, public comments. Does, uh, any council have anything they'd like to respond to public comments?
Yes.
No, public comments are closed. Next, I have a law enforcement update for Mr. Captain Kevin James. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, mayor pro tem and council, and congratulations to our new seats. For the sake of time, I did not present you a written report like I usually do at the first of every month. And what it does is cover stats from the month previous. It covers and kinda tells you, it goes through our activities for the month prior. That will start with, uh, in January, which I'll also give you a yearly report that'll cover this year in comparison to 2020, in comparison to 2021. I think all of you have got my contact information anytime. And, uh, Mr. Barber and Mr. McIntyre both tell you. It, it doesn't matter. My phone's always, we've been, I'm glad to answer it. As long as I can, if I can get to it, I'll answer your call and be glad to help you with anything I can. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions for you that you may have tonight. And then outside of that, I don't have anything else for you.
McIntyre, you got any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gay? Ms. Buchalek? Danberg?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, have a good one. Congratulations again.
I just wanna say, good job on the parade. Everything, y'all, went real well.
Thank you.
Next, the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Gay has made the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Let the motion show that it was unanimous. Next, we have, uh, new business. We need the approval of the 2022 meeting calendar. Someone like to make the motion to, do we have any discussion on the calendar first? Someone like to make the motion to approve the calendar?
Motion to approve the calendar for 2022 town council meetings.
McIntyre's made the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Calendar approved unanimously. Next is, uh, we have the manager's update, Mr. Michael McLorne.
Uh, congratulations to, let me stand up here. Thank you to the outgoing members. Congratulations to the new members. Uh, we have all three of you signed up for essentials for municipal government. You've all completed stage one of the orientation. And Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that is my report.
Very good report. Um, next we have, uh, council closing comments. You're up.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say welcome to the incoming council members, Mr. Gay, Ms. Buchalek, and Mr. Amburgi. All I can, the only advice I'll give you is just do your job and you'll be fine. I think you guys will be capable. Hopefully, we'll continue doing good things for the town and its residents, and I look forward to working with you. Those of you who showed up this evening, thank you for coming out again. We always get a big crowd at these events. I'd like to see more people come more often, but it's because you are fifth in this government, which is why you stay home. There's nothing much to worry about, but thank you very much. Have a good holiday, Christmas, New Years, whatever you celebrate. Please enjoy safely. Thank you.
Mr. Amburgi.
Yes, um, I'd like to thank the citizens of Indian Trail for their confidence with their vote and entrusted me to help with the direction of our town with integrity and morals. I just wanna do the best for the community, what's right for the community. I'm, I'm a voice for the citizens, and, um, that's what I ran on, and that's what I'm gonna do. God bless everyone, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Gay.
First, I'd like to, uh, remember Shirley Howell, who's a good friend of all of us. I promised Shirley that I would run the town council. Thank goodness I was able to keep that promise. Also, I'd like to, uh, first of all, thank everyone in Indian Trail for their confidence and vote for me. Like I mentioned, I very much appreciate, uh, Jim Cherry and his support. John Hurley, the workhorse, he was out passing out brochures everywhere for all of us. My favorite's a YouTube producer, Angry, out there with, uh, with, um... And, um, also, uh, Susan Bowles, and, uh, I said, also Susan, is it Su- Samantha? Samantha? Samantha, yeah, Samantha. Really appreciate yours, all you and all you did for us. Thank you very much. And, uh, I, I think you all know that we're gonna be for the people of this town. We're gonna try to put things in a little different direction. My big emphasis is gonna be more on light industrial and commercial. I'd like to keep people in town so that we can... But thank you, Mike. Happy holidays.
Mr. Barber.
Well, first off, thoughts and prayers out to, uh, Mayor Alvarez and hope he gets well and be back soon. That way, I don't have to run the meeting. So, but yeah, I hope he gets well soon, and I thought some prayers with him. Glad to see the family and community leaders here from Mr. Hurley, Mr. Cherry, and Mr. Hemby, and the ones in the audience here. I'm glad you came and see family and, you know, and of course, with the community leader, Brody Amburgi over here is really glad he's here too. But the staff and everybody, thank you and for coming out. I wanna welcome the new members. I think the Indian people, citizens of Indian Trail made three fantastic choices. I know Shirley Howell would be really pleased that Mr. Gay was elected, and I know she'd be just thrilled, tickled pink that a smart, intelligent woman is finishing out her two-term. So, and it's always a pleasure to have another conservative Christian up here, and glad you're up here. So I think we'll make a great council, uh, and be professional. I'd like to wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas. Appreciate the staff and all you do, and hope you and your families, everybody have a great Christmas. Thank you.
And Ms. Buchalek.
So sweet and simple. I do wanna thank everyone for having the confidence and willing to come in. Um, I do confess that I'll be the best for the people of Indian Trail, and just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Well, the mayor's not here, I've noticed now. He's gonna have closing comments, but hmm, get the last word in. I kinda feel like we got married to him all of a sudden. But, uh, but anyway, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. We are now adjourned. Please, uh, stick around, we've got a reception.
Right downstairs.
Here, downstairs. Refreshments, and take all you want. It's on the, uh, town manager. Thank you.